Ms. Fano, here. Mrs. Fano, here. Mr. Palma.
Here.
Mr. Petrazzino.
Here.
Mr. Rappaport.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman.
Here.
Mr. Daughtry.
Here.
Dr. Modrak.
Here.
Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as a. Ms. Slot, the open meetings.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record and the Montville Tap Into, the board's official newspapers on July 7, 2025.
Thank you. Tom? Superintendent's report.
If you just bear with me, I have a couple of things I wanted to go over. One was, I wanted to start with the good news. I just got to find it now. All right. So, you know, a lot of times we're constantly dealing with emails or sometimes people come to the mic and there's, we get a lot of, you know, unfortunately negativity or people that just want to voice their opinion about some kind of issue. But we do also get a lot of positive stuff that's going on. Teachers get this directly, principals get it, and we receive it sometimes. And I just wanted to share this because I know the summer was a little bit slower. So I just wanted to share out just one, a couple of examples. So this first example was Cedar Hill Senior Clapout. This person wrote back just giving us a huge thank you about that for the senior class of 2025. You witnessed the love and excitement in the gym that day that that parent did see. There was the listening to the students speak about their impressive future plans and where they would be heading after they graduated from the high school and the foundation of Cedar Hill that set them all up for success. So this person could not be more, she gave us a heartfelt thank you. So that was nice to see. Another one for, this actually was Cedar Hill again, but again, to express our deepest gratitude, wonderful school, special attention and love for the LIFT program, which is our special ed program there, meant so much to these parents and they sincerely appreciated the school district's support in considering what's best for this child's growth. At the elementary level, we've been offering enrichment math programs after school for a lot of our students. And this one was, thanks so much for hosting such a fun group. My daughter absolutely loved it and, and she's, you know, looking forward to many more times worth of math enrichment. These math enrichment programs, they explore math with hands-on engaging activities. They work to solve world, word problems that were hidden in eggs, that had these little gifs. They would do math monsters and they'd do model magic and just really causing a lot of excitement down there. That was at grade three. But we also offered math enrichment for grade two. And again, we have received another person just saying just how outstanding it was for the second graders. So much fun while she learns different types of operations. The kids are finding, although they have struggles, they're still finding the joy in regular day-to-day math tasks. These teachers truly made it fun. So that continued on. We also have some teachers, but also administrators that do a lot of things on the side of trying to just promote education and different things that they're passionate about. Just recently, we had Jessica Nathan, who is our elementary special ed supervisor, and she was asked to speak to NJPSA, which is the Supervisors and Principals Association. And she spoke about being the adult in the room, the art of making tough decisions. And this workshop dives into the complex challenges and the decision-making within the educational world that provide guidance to make difficult decisions with confidence and integrity. That was well received and she was asked back to help train other people that signed up for that workshop. And Mr. Austin Thompson, who's our Director of Technology, he's also going to be speaking again with NJPSA. More about privacy, security, and student data. He's kind of, Austin's the guru on many things that are technology-related. People reach out to him all the time to see what's going on. And he'll be speaking about that at one of the upcoming conferences. So our people are being asked to do these things and they're willing to step up and, and share their knowledge that they've gained over the years. So wonderful stuff going on. As I shared with you in your packets the last time, we had our fourth quarter goals. Just to give you quick updates on that, we have the district goal number one, which was to implement, enhance, and evaluate the ways to address mental health. And we put in place the gaggle system. That's when we're checking students if they're doing inappropriate things on, on the websites or if they're indicating they might self-harm themselves. So we're able to find these issues and get the kids the help that they need. That's worked so well so far and will be continuing in that next year. We also had our safety care training that was completed by the staff that was required for. And we switched our school resource officer. We had a new one come in in the middle of the year and he's been working out great. Our district goal number two, which was about innovative learning opportunities. And we had K-12 teachers were provided with Google Classroom Training, which will be going into effect this school year coming up. We had new English Language Arts classes for the seventh and eighth grade that will be solidified and running for next year. So teachers were working on that. And modifications to the elementary schedule in response to a lot of stakeholder feedback from the teachers as well as other people that will be implementing for next year. So we're looking forward to those changes. Goal number three was the district of security protocols that we put in place. Again, I told you about the SRO. We've, we're working right now on a lot of our security vestibules. So all of our schools will have that. That'll be completed before the start of school. We continue to have our monthly meetings with the police, police chief and others. And again, Austin and his team are doing incredible things with keeping us protected through cybersecurity. So it's amazing how people, I've used the example before, but they even try to get into our systems through our copiers. And they, they're able to stop them before they get into our, our systems through these back doors. So they're doing a great job there. And the last one, the district goal number four, just a quick examples of what we're doing with our facilities. You can see a lot of the construction going around, even just here, the whole front of the building with the, the security system. But we repaired the stadium bleachers and put some railings on that for people to be able to walk up and down. We're closing out the sixth grade wing for the univentilators at Lazar. And we're going to be upgrading the electrical fire systems at the high school. So a lot of great stuff going on for the safety of, of everybody involved. So that's the good news. One sad note is the district across the nation, $6.8 billion was being withheld by the federal government. This is going to be in our title money. This is titles one through four. It's affected us about $180,000. So that money, we don't know what's going on with that money, what the feds are going to do with that. So we're going to continue with our programs. We're going to take that out of our operating budget and continue. This money is for students that are immigrants, students that are struggling with basic skills. This provides teaching, training for teachers. This provides all these extra money for all these people to help them that are struggling in our school system. So that money collectively is 180. We haven't received any kind of notification from the federal government or anything like that. We're reading about this in the newspapers and through other sources we're getting this. So there's no direct communication. There's some rumors that some of this money might be unfrozen, but we do not know. So right now, Katine and the, and the others, we're planning going forward with the same programs we've offered in the past. We just got to find alternate ways to fund this out of our budget. So that's a little bit of a sad note, but we'll see how we get through in the next couple of months if that changes.
So just a question. Typically, do we put out the money for the programs and then get reimbursed by the federal government?
Correct. Correct, we do.
So if we put that money back and we don't get reimbursed, then we're out?
Correct. Correct. That's how the federal and the state governments work. Good. No, that's it for now.
Just one quick question. Gaggle over the summer, is it still active over the summer?
Yes, it is. And we are getting some alerts and we're following up with parents on that.
Okay, good. Okay. Any other questions for Tom about his presentation?
Karen just made me think. How long does it typically take them to make that reimbursement payment?
It's based on how fast we put the reimbursement in. We actually put it in every month and then they reimburse us. Takes, many times it only takes a couple of days.
Okay, nothing else? Presentations?
Okay, Mario. All right, this evening, I'm going to share with you a very brief overview of the most recent results for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. The New Jersey Department of Education requires districts to share out at a public board meeting the results of the assessment within 60 days of the scores being released. So I think the deadline for the 60 days is the day after the August board meeting. So that's one of the reasons why we're, we're doing it in July to make sure we meet that, that deadline. This presentation is much shorter than the one I typically do in the, in the fall, the NJSLA, which involves grades three through 11 and also total district performance. This is a very short presentation, just to share out the scores and, and, you know, where our students fell on the graduation assessment. First, just a general overview. As I mentioned, the NJGPA is taken by 11th grade students and they need to meet a minimum requirement of 725 for that. And one thing I want to bring to your attention is the, the last statement there that the, actually the last two lines, that the ELA component is aligned with the grade 10 standards, even though it's given to 11th graders. And the mathematics component is aligned with Algebra I and Geometry standards. So 11th grade students have to pass those two standards in the assessment. If they don't pass in 11th grade, there are some other options for them as 12th graders to try to meet those standards, which we'll talk about in, in a minute. The two areas we talked about, ELA and mathematic components for the assessment. They have to meet that designated test score of 725. If they don't, there are some other options for them to meet the graduation requirement. Very few of our students do complete their portfolio appeal if they were unable to either get the cut score of 725 in the Language Arts and Math or they didn't meet another cut score from other competency tests like Accuplacer, SATs, PSATs. There are certain scores that if they do achieve, they meet that graduation standard. So for the majority of our students, overwhelming majority of our students do meet the proficiency in either the test itself, one of the alternate assessments, and then ultimately the final step, which is the portfolio appeal. So they do have a few options to meet that graduation requirement. If you look at our results this year, it breaks it down into really two categories. Are students graduation-ready or are they not yet graduation-ready? And you can see at MTHS in 2025, we had 4.2% of our students scored out on the test as not yet graduation-ready. There was an improvement from 2024 where 8.4% of our students weren't. So we did see an improvement there. And of course, graduation-ready, we moved up from 91.6 in, in 2024 to 95.8. So we, it's nice to see that improvement, you know, in that, in that one-year period. And also same, same thing with the students with IEPs, which is one of the categories that we're required to report out on. As you can see there, they've also made, you know, a significant improvement over the 24, 2024 school year to 2025. And that's in English and Language Arts. And of course, the state, you know, averages are in the middle there just for a reference point. And as you know, over the years, we typically significantly outperform the overall state scores on, on this test as well as the ones that I present on in the, in the fall. As far as mathematics, we saw some, some similar gains. Students not ready, graduation-ready yet in math in 2025 is 18%, 18.8. Last year, we were falling in around 24.4. So we saw some improvement there. And also obviously, it's reflected in the graduation-ready where we're now 81.3%. And last year, we fell in that 75.6% range. So again, some nice improvement there. And again, if you look at the students with IEPs, we also saw, saw some significant gains in that area too, from 2024 to 2025. And again, those are the only two areas that are tested and those are the only scores really that we, we need to produce specific to those two subject areas. One of the other requirements is also to compare your three largest ethnic group and they're, and they're breaking out by ethnic group performance. So we simply, you know, broke that out as graduation-ready. And again, Hispanic, Asian, and white students is typically our three largest ethnic groups. And those are the percentages of, of students that are graduation-ready that are in those ethnic groups for ELA. And that's again, broken out by ethnic group for math graduation-ready, 56% Hispanic, 88.9 Asian, and 82.3 for white students. What we typically do, there's not a lot of assessment that we do as far as administrators with the NJGPA. It's not like the NJSLA where there's a lot of different data points that we break down. So essentially for this, it's only one grade level in which students are, are participating. We take a look at these results and the principals, along with the supervisors and the teachers, will review that data to see if there's some type of area that might need some attention within the curriculum to help move students forward. And that is an ongoing process over the course of the year. So again, this, like every other standardized test, this is one data point that we use within a district to, to help us, you know, make some decisions. But there's a lot of other assessment and data points that we use that really drives our instruction forward. So that's essentially it. It's a very quick presentation. It's just a matter of sharing it out. And it was nice to see some improvement in those areas from last year's administration.
Thank you. Any questions?
How long are these tests?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't, yeah, no, I don't know. I don't know it offhand. I know it's over, you know, a couple of days. But I don't know how long the actual units are and how long they're sitting for those tests. Not off the top of my mind, but I can get that to you.
Yeah, so in terms of numbers, do we know how many of our rising seniors are not yet graduation-ready?
As far as numbers, I mean, the percentages are, this is for last year's 11th grade, so.
But I thought those numbers also included 12th graders who hadn't passed, this year's 12th graders who hadn't yet passed anything.
Well, no, this was administered in the spring. So any current, any 11th graders that just, you know, were moving on to 12th graders, as 12th graders, they have an opportunity to retake it in the summer or in the fall. So some will retake it, some may meet that graduation requirement other ways, but I don't have an exact number. But the percentages show, I think it was 98% or 95.8% in Language Arts. I don't know what that breaks down as far as numbers go.
Yeah, it was less than math. You know, it just, just blows my mind that we have great schools in New Jersey and yet somehow or other, 42% of the kids in New Jersey are not graduation-ready in math. Almost makes me wonder, is the problem the students or is the problem the test?
Good point.
You can submit a new version.
Any other question?
Yeah. But it, it ends up our students in 12th grade, through one of those other methods, all meet it. We don't end up having any students as a result of not meet, right? Not meeting it for this reason or?
Right, I mean, overall graduation rate. I mean, Tom, you might know off the top of your head, but we're somewhere in high 98 or 99%. So, you know, through, through these assessments, overwhelming majority of our kids obviously are graduating. There are a few that may not, but it may not be related to their performance on the test. It might be related for other reasons.
I just, I think the numbers showed it, but I just want to point out that students in Montville with IEPs scored better than the average population in, in the state. Thanks to the administration and, and the teachers for a great job.
Very true. Yeah.
Okay. And if there's no other questions, then we'll move on to committee reports. Facilities Finance, Karen?
So the Finance Committee met just prior to tonight's meeting. Topics of discussion was implementation of this year's general operating budget, the concerns about federal grants for 2025, 2026. The state health benefits plan for 2026 has had its premium increase up to 27%. But luckily, through the foresight, wisdom, and presence of our business office, we're not in the state health benefits plan. And so we, we sort of dodged a bullet there. We also talked about summer projects going on around the schools. And as Tom said, we're hoping for completion of all of the vestibules, the security vestibules by the start of school in September. The central air conditioning, the central office air conditioning is not functional and looking to replace that. And I learned tonight what a switchgear is. It's actually that connection to public service electricity. And ours is 50 years old and we're going to install a new one.
And it means that we have to shut down the high school for a few days. Cut power to the high school, to large sections of it, right?
Yes, but not during the school year.
Not during the school year, over the summer. Yeah, that'd be fun in the dark. Okay. Curriculum, Michelle?
We're in the process of getting a meeting date together for the next several weeks, talking about district calendars among other items. So we'll report back next month.
Okay. John, policy?
We have an upcoming meeting this August to discuss a variety.
August 18th?
August 18th.
Yeah, I think it's August 18th. Okay. Communications, Joe?
No report.
Okay, Christine, safety, security?
No report.
No report. Okay, Karen, New Jersey School Boards?
So at school boards, we're setting up dates for the year's meetings and event schedule. We have a date for the quarterly executive committee meeting. We have a date for the upcoming county association leadership meeting and more dates will be coming.
Okay, thank you. Mike Rappaport, Morris County School Boards?
No report.
Okay, Joe, Morris County Educational Services?
No report, we're on break right now.
Okay, and drug awareness?
They're also on break.
They're on break too. Everyone's on break. What about John? Montville Athletic Boosters, don't say they're on break.
No, I, I just heard from some of the leadership today that there's some turnover. Pete Matarazzo's, Matarazzo's going to be taking over, running that booster program and they have a, you know, he's going to shoot me an email in the fall when their next meeting is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Karen, actually, we might as well skip the liaisons to the schools. I just want to talk about Cedar Hill. Do you have anything?
I gave that report at the last meeting.
Yeah, that's what I said. We'll skip the liaisons to the schools.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move on to public participation. Section H, I will remind the public that when you come up, please give your name, address, give us your comments. Comments are limited to five minutes. And please, I apologize if I cut you off at your five minutes, but we're going to hold it to the five-minute rule. So anyone that would like to speak, please come to the podium. I see no one. Okay, let's move on to consent resolutions. Items, our sections I through N, motion please?
Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, item, our section I, minutes? Questions? Section J, administration, any questions? K, Facilities Finance? You have a thing in section L, personnel, you have, you want to say your?
So for L, three, number 12, we're going to be scratching that item there. And then we have three walk-in addendums I just handed out to you beforehand. One of them is the termination of an employee. Another one is the hiring of an employee. And the last one is a stipend for another employee.
Section M, curriculum, any questions? No. Policy, no action. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazzino?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Abstain I, yes, on everything else.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, abstain on K1, check number 11360.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes. Okay. Any old business from the board? Any items, Christine?
Dave, I just want to share with the board that since the, our last meeting where we, we discussed the cell phone visit and it was in the paper, I've had multiple community members say to me, oh, I think that's a great idea about the cell phones for the kids. It'll help them. So I just wanted to mention that to all of you guys.
Well, that's going to be in the discussion at policy on August 18th.
Yes.
So you will report back to us on that one.
Yes, I will.
Good job.
The very next day.
Good job. Okay. Anyone else, any other comments, old business? No? Okay, that's, any new business from board members?
On June 23rd, I got to attend the New Jersey School Board's Leadership Summit down at Manville High School. It was an all-day event, very well-tended. We went over various topics such as workshops on running effective meetings, parliamentary procedure, strengthening the board's superintendent relationship as well as communicating with the public. So.
That's wonderful, thank you. That'll go well in a few minutes.
Yes.
Okay, when we get, when we do some board education training in a little bit. But before we get to that, I would like to open it up for the next public participation session. On any item that you care to speak about, if you want to speak to the board about anything, please come to the microphone, name, address, and limit your comments to five minutes. I see none. Okay, then. Going once, going twice, we're done? Okay, it's closed. Okay, we are now going to do some board education training. Do we want to do it here?
Yes.
Okay, we want to do it here, so.
We're going to square this off, right?
Charlene, you want us to square it off? Okay, so basically what this is, is that the board likes to take the opportunity to learn more about how to be an effective board. So we're going to be talking about a number of items, basically about what good governance is and how to communicate and how to work together better. If you want to hang out and hear all about how we are trying to be a better board, you're free to stay. If you choose not to, you leave. But I guess we're going to have an audience for this. This is the first time we've ever had an audience for, for training. Charlene? This is. Okay. You have a microphone?
I gave everybody the handout you gave me earlier this evening. So they all have that. So you can, they haven't had a chance to really read it yet because they just gave it in closed session, but.
Not very effective.
But I did share it electronically last night. There you go. I shared that electronically.
Okay, good. So kind of, you know, the intent of tonight is not necessarily kind of a, a training where I'm talking at you, but more kind of an opportunity for the board to come together and kind of recalibrate, kind of think about how we're doing our work together as a governance team. And sometimes it's important to just kind of step back, reflect on how we're doing and, and have those conversations. Because, you know, one of the things sometimes we don't always realize is that, you know, that the, the value or the importance in the work that we're doing here, that when high-performing boards work together with their superintendent, you can have a positive impact on student achievement. But then also, you know, we're kind of creating a culture here, right? Like the work that you're doing now and the, the norms and things that you're establishing are not only impacting your board, but it's also impacting future boards. What you're doing now, the culture you're establishing now, when new members come onto the board, they're kind of coming into the fold, right? Of kind of saying that this is the way that we do things around here. So we want to make sure then that from the board's perspective, that the work that we're doing is work that we're proud of. It's work that we want to have, you know, identify who we are and what our culture is. So sometimes it's just helpful to kind of take a step back, look at that, talk about that and just kind of reaffirm that we're, you know, that we're where we want to be and kind of, you know, identifying if there's anything we think that we would like to do differently. So it's really, tonight is just kind of a facilitated conversation. It's really your conversation, right? To just, you know, kind of talk about, you know, the board. So we started out, you know, I had given a handout about a governance mindset. And that was just an article that was from the book, The Governance Core, which I don't know if any of you have read it, familiar with it, which I don't know if any of you have read it, familiar with it, but it's kind of one of the books that, are you shaking your head, no? Why?
Sure.
Okay, because we use it all the time. But just to kind of essentially say that, you know, research would say that what separates a high-performing board member from other board members is their governance mindset, and having that impact and that focus on governance and thinking from that perspective when you're sitting here at the board table. So just kind of saying that that's the, that's the starting point, or that's where we would like to, you know, kind of, kind of what we're trying to get to. So having said that, you know, then there's also then a handout that just kind of has some discussion prompts. So that's kind of where we're going to go right now. So kind of what the big picture, or what we're, you know, trying to accomplish at the end of this, is saying what good governance looks like for you, for your board, and that what intentional steps can we take individually and collectively to make sure that we consistently practice it. So you kind of first start out with kind of that, that big picture of saying, kind of that vision of saying, what does it look like? And what does it feel like when we're functioning at our best as a governance team? So I'm going to kind of just take some notes here, just so that I'll type this up and, you know, at the, and send it back to you, just so that we kind of have, you know, some record of the conversation, but just kind of wanted to see, at least if I have a pen, I will, just, you know, here I go. Start the conversation with you kind of, you know, talking about what it, what it looks like when you're at your best. Like, when, you know, what makes you proud about your board in the way that you function and the way that you do things?
I'll start. I think for the most part, we have a very cohesive board. I always like to say a good board member or good boards have training, experience, and trust. And I think we have that. I think sometimes we're human, you know, we don't always live up to those ideals, but for the most part, I think what the public sees is a cohesive board and a board that tries to move together in one direction.
I, I think we laugh a lot together. And I think the public sees when one of us says something and we all agree, or maybe we don't agree, but we laugh. And so I think they see that, I mean, that's what I feel anyway.
Of course, when Charlie was on your board, it was probably hard not to, right?
Respect, respect is key. I think we all respect each other and our views.
I appreciate when the hard questions get asked and we have a discussion on them, because everyone's always cordial about it, but we're not afraid to raise hard questions and get that discussion started.
And what came to me right away was also respect, like Joe, but just to take it to the next level, I think we all know that sometimes we come from different places, or have different backgrounds or different thoughts, but the foundation of the respect that we're all here for the same reason and take our job seriously, and care about doing what we're supposed to do, and care about the kids and the district, and giving the kids the best education possible, working in a respectful way with the administration, and taking our job seriously is, I think, important to all of us, and that's good to know.
I think that's, that would be called sincerity. I think that we all sincerely have the best interests of the district at heart. Even though we may have differences of opinions, we still all very much care and want to see the district succeed.
I can probably go by a lot of years of experience and seeing how, seeing how the board has kind of gone through a metamorphosis from 20 years ago to now, where, I guess, working backwards, you see where we are now. We have an excellent relationship with the superintendent and the administration. He has our trust, I think we have his. The board meetings are efficient. There's not a lot said, and that's because I think ahead of time, we basically know what's going on and why it's going on. This, the board meeting doesn't become a tool for discovery, as they would say in the legal profession. And I can now work backwards 20 years when the relationship between the board and the superintendent was not a particularly good one. I think the board meetings, I think a lot of board members at the time saw the board meetings as a vehicle to make a name for themselves, almost sometimes became like a exercise as who can get the most quotes in today. And board meetings went a lot longer. I can never remember the, I think it was my second year on the board, we were talking about the budget. You have to, we had to have the budget passed by the end of the meeting to be in state compliance, and it's 20 of 12, and people are arguing over, well, maybe we can take $100 from this club and put it into this club. And I think we passed the budget like 12 minutes before the midnight. But, you know, even before I was on the board, I heard about board meetings going to 1:00 in the morning. Board presidents spending like the whole afternoon on a Thursday in the superintendent's office going on over the agenda item by item.
Not me.
No, not, yeah, absolutely not. No, Karen was responsible probably more than anyone else for changing the whole flavor of the board. And someday she's going to go in the Hall of Fame, the Board Hall of Fame for that.
Thank you.
But, you know, we used to say, don't let your board meetings be the best show in town. And, you know, sometimes they were, and like I say, I think we've really come a long way from that, where now I think we've become a district because of the board, where people want to come and work here, as opposed to kind of get a job somewhere else because they knew that the board was, you know, the best show in town.
Just to piggyback on wanting to work here, I was, attended a conference that was hosted by the NJASA. The executive director is Rich Bazza, and the deputy executive director is Judy Ratner, who spent some time in our district. And at that meeting, it happened that we had the Tamar Sitzer, and also the director of special services. And, you know, we were talking, and, and they said, we're not saying this just because we, you're here as a board member, but we love working in Motville Township. She said the culture here is one of exploration, of taking chances in terms of trying new things. We're supported by the administration and de facto by the Board of Education. So people, exactly what Mike said, people want to come and work here, and we, all of us should be proud of that.
I think too, we joke about the attendance at the board meetings, but I think that actually shows a level of trust that the town has in the board, that, you know, they believe in what we're doing.
So I'll just piggyback on what Caitlin said back in those days, when we used to routinely, we had the board meetings over at the town hall, and the bleachers would be packed because everyone wanted to come to the board meeting so they can then gossip about all the things that went on at the board meeting, you know, a source of gossip.
We haven't had one of those meetings since the pandemic era, but...
We knew the best show in town, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, so you want to keep going with guardrails?
Well, you know, one of the things that I just wanted to kind of have the board talk about a little bit, you know, you all kind of said, you know, we're all here for the same reason, we all kind of come together. So I just kind of wanted to talk about or defining what that reason is. Like, you know, it talks about kind of what's your unity of purpose? Like, when you're all here, and you're all voting on something, and you're all, like, what is that? What is that one thing that binds you, that connects you, that's the most important thing that drives the work that you do?
Is it good for kids? Oh, sorry, Mike.
I was going to say student achievement.
Yeah, is it good for kids?
Everyone's in agreement that that's...
Yeah.
Give the kids what they need.
Perfect. So that's, yeah, and so that's, you know, what kind of separates two boards that are able to accomplish the things that you've talked about. You have to have that, right? You have to have that one thing that's driving all of you, and that you're all in agreement that that's why we're here. All the conversations, all the decisions that we make, that that's what, that is what drives us. So, yeah, so then the next part of that is looking at guardrails. And so kind of just a term of essentially saying that, you know, what helps us do our work, and then what makes it harder to do our work? And it can be internal things or, and external things, and, you know, have some examples there. So first, just kind of wanted to talk about from the board's perspective, let's look at kind of what helps us perform our governance role. So like, what are those things either internally or, you know, perhaps externally that allows you to be as effective as you are? Like, what are the processes or the things that are in place that enable that, the board to be able to perform that way?
Well, you know, one of the things that we have tried to engrain in our board is that we supervise the superintendent. You know, we're not out there trying to run the district, tell teachers what to do, tell principals what to do. We don't, I think we really work hard to try to say, no, our job is here, and we ask the superintendent to do the work and take care of the issues that we may hear about, but we really do try not to get involved in the day-to-day operations of the school. I think that's critical for keeping a district in good shape. I think if you, as board members, if we start getting involved, and then you start having multiple bosses for every school principal and every administrator, it just leads to chaos and confusion. And so I think that's one of the things that maybe goes back to the effect of governance as well, is our ability to separate out our responsibilities and roles from what, you know, from the pressures of maybe the community. So I'm sorry, anyone else? John, go ahead, come on, John.
I think the administration reporting helps us do our job as well.
Yeah, there's definitely really good communication coming out of the central office. Dr. Gorman, Kattine, Andrea, Casey. In particular, Dr. Gorman really tries to keep the board members in the loop about what's going on. Board members are nevertheless to know something, and we try and respect that with, with Dr. Gorman. If something comes, percolates up in the community, you know, we're hearing this or that, and we report it back to him.
And also, when we have questions for Dr. Gorman, he responds with an answer to all board members so that we're all understanding, and we don't waste his time maybe thinking or asking the same question, which is great. And also, I think all of us have complete trust with our business department, and that is, that's a, a great component to what, you know, to trust period from us, because we're not only community members, we're taxpayers. And with Dr. Gorman, he's a very caring individual, so he has a very warm personality. So if we, we could call him up if we had a question, which is very nice, and, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know if all superintendents are like that, so...
Yeah, I was going to say when, 20 years ago, when you were fighting till midnight over the budget, you didn't have Kattine back then, so it's part of the problem too, but...
Yeah, and I think that faith in the administration is really key. We, you know, I've heard many times, our one, our one person we hire is the superintendent, and then it all goes down from there. And so most of us were on the team that hired Dr. Gorman, and we feel good about that. And then the other thing is, it's mentioned here also, but I do think the preparation, I mean, I know that, you know, taking the time, no matter how busy your life gets, you know, and what is thrown your way, to read all the materials and the emails that are sent, and understand ahead of time, and, you know, when things are proposed, sometimes, you know, weigh in advance of it going on in a public agenda, if it's discussed at closed. When we digest it and ask the questions in advance, it, it helps the meetings to be shorter because we've dealt with it that way.
Yeah, he has been, Tom's been very good. Initially, when he got here, not to roast you, but initially, it wasn't, it wasn't as much communication. And over the past couple of years, his communication has vastly, well, I should say vastly, but has improved to the point that really, in his evaluation, it shows. In his first evaluation, there were a number of not observes. I didn't know, I couldn't tell, I, you know, no comments. Now we're down to just a few of those. If you read his weeklies and his reports, to be perfectly honest, I don't think there should be any reason why there are any not observes or not appables on his review, because he's very clear. I mean, going over the district goals tonight, for instance, I think he does an excellent job of keeping us in the loop, as it's been said, of communicating with us. And so that makes our job a lot easier when it comes to evaluating him and providing feedback.
And what about you, like, your work with each other and your committee structure? And are you getting, you know, how, is that working for you as a group and the information that you get from that? And do you consider that to be part of your success? Because I know sometimes it's, when it's good, it works really well, and some boards, it's hard to get to that place sometimes. So I just kind of wondered where you were in that.
I think it can be frustrating sometimes for board members who have ideas and opinions and not have them be expressed at the board table in public, but rather in the committee. I'm a firm believer in the committee system. It takes a lot of trust to have the committee system actually work. We, I think, mastered that. But the committee system allows a board member to really express their opinion and thoughts about any one particular topic. And then, of course, the trust of the rest of the board accepting any recommendation.
And for me, if I was not on a particular committee, but I had strong feelings about a topic or wanted to give my opinion, I would send an email to the chair of that committee just so I felt like my thoughts and values were shared with those three people or four people. And that was very helpful, I felt.
And I think that sending your comments, the chairs of our committees do take them into account, and they do relay them to the committees, from what I've seen. You know, the committee chairs do take their jobs respons, you know, as a responsibility, and share those thoughts of the people who are not there. I think that builds a lot of trust with the rest of the board.
Perfect, yep, no, I mean, all the things you're talking about, like, if I were to talk to a board about best practices, those would be the things that I would be telling them. So it's happy to, to hear it coming to me rather than from me, so, yeah, it's, so it's very refreshing to hear. And so, you know, it's understandably then why it works well, why you have a strong system. And, you know, as Karen said, it really, it starts with trust, but it's trust, you know, it's informed trust, right? The rest of you know that the committees are doing the work on your behalf, and that you have the ability to provide your feedback whenever you feel that you need to. So that, you know, so you've kind of covered kind of the, you know, the best of both ways to, to make this function well. What about kind of then anything in terms of guardrails that make your job harder to do?
I've thought a lot about this lately. One thing I think we've all said at one time or another is, a lot of people have come to me about this. And once you get on the Board of Ed, you find friends that you didn't know you had, you find people who you thought were just acquaintances, who like to kind of catch your ear if you're out socially, at a game, at a party, and, you know, by the way, do you know about this? And so, and this is not anything that any, you know, it's human nature to have a conversation or people want to talk to you. But I think we have to be careful. We each have maybe certain groups or certain people that we associate with more, and you might feel that you're hearing the voice of the whole community, or things, this is what everybody wants, and it's not necessarily true, and it might even, without you meaning to, and myself included, like, skew, if you don't take a step back and look at the administration's perspective and what's really good for all of the students and the good of the district, it can be a challenge, I feel like, for any board member, for anyone involved in any type of politics or public life. So I just think, I myself even, when people come to me, you have to know what you say in terms of the chain of command, where to send people, the answers that you're supposed to give them and direct them to. But also, I think it's important for all of us to just do the best we can to take that step back and, and look at the bigger picture, and not just hear loudness, you know, hear a couple people, and really see if, where it's coming from, and, and take that, that broader look. So I think that's a challenge for anybody.
And how does everyone else feel about that challenge, or how you found a way to navigate that? that?
Well, yeah, I, I agree. I think it, it's hard. I mean, there's community pressure for you to make one decision or another. And I think each of us has our own circle of friends and acquaintances that we may hear from. And then we may hear another board member's, you know, friends of an acquaintance, acquaintances offer something else. I think that's probably one of the hardest things about being a board member is being able to hear all the opinions from as many constituents as possible and then come to a decision that's, that is what is best for the children.
I regularly have people stop me and talk to me and want me to, you know, take a position here or there or do something. And I have to explain to them, you know, my job is about the whole district. It's not just one group of people, it's not just one item, one, one thing. And it can be frustrating on my friends, even my family, when they say, hey, you know, you really should do something about this. And I, we can't, you know, this is, this is what we're doing and we, you know, and that's one of the challenges when you have to, when you're facing that pressure from friends and family and you know you're gonna tell them something they don't want to hear. But it's what's right and it's what you have to do. And that is definitely a challenge. It happens all the time.
I totally agree. We, we're elected, so we have people that campaigned for us, we have groups of friends that voted for us. So it's very difficult to, to share that, you know, it's not politics on the board, it's what Dave said, it's just what's in the best interest of the kids. That's it. All the kids. So that's what's different, even though we're political, we're really not political. So that's a challenge. But I feel like every Board of Ed member forever has had that challenge. So, you know, it's just tough. But the people I think that are stay as board members for long periods of time or in the beginning, I think the training is very helpful to new members. That's, I think, very, very important.
But I think our ability to actually come to that decision that's best for the kids helps us maintain our status as a high-performing board.
Based on, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, based on the fact that, as Christine said, we are elected officials, and you combine this with the proverb that says, nobody ever learned anything by talking. I think we, as elected officials, I do think we have a duty to listen to what people are saying, which is not the same as doing what people want us to do. But by listening to what's going on in the district, we might learn about things that we simply didn't know about. After all, a lot of us don't have kids in the schools and if we do, we don't have kids in every school. And something, you find information and sometimes we, you know, I can see Tom at a baseball game and talk to him or something like that. But as we just share thoughts with each other and just trying to gain information that will help us ultimately make the right decisions, of course, without making any promises to anybody about anything. So long, we have an obligation to listen, we don't have an obligation to obey.
Well, and I know some boards are saying that it's becoming more difficult as well as, you know, recognizing you represent the community, but sometimes the community is not in agreement, right, with what it wants. So then that makes your job sometimes more difficult then to kind of, as you said, kind of take that step back and say, okay, we're hearing conflicting thoughts all from our same community. So then now how do we, as those who are elected to represent the community and represent all the students, make that best decision, right? That's on behalf of the students and on behalf of the district. And just kind of recognizing that that's, you know, your job sounds like it's getting increasingly more difficult just because of situations like that. Any other thoughts about, you know, any, any other guardrails, both positive or, you know, that makes your job easier or makes your job more difficult before we move away from it?
Number five has sustaining team health. I think it would benefit the board to, every, once in a while, even if it's only once a year, to do a retreat on a Saturday or better on a Saturday during the day, in my opinion, because I'm old now and by the evening time I get tired.
You know, I used to drive at night.
I don't. I can't see. I think that type of interaction that's free of the board setting is very healthy. You know, we break bread here. We have dinner. We've had dinner for years. And I think that helps.
Well, that does also a Karen initiative.
I, 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 I'm a believer in breaking bread. That's, and it's not just because I'm Italian. Right, John?
Amen. No, I, I mean, even when we go down to Atlantic City and the conferences, the conversations that we have are...
Even when we go to Atlantic City and eat and Karen misses it because she's getting honored for something else. And, you know, we still get great conversation and I think, you know, it just helps learning how each others think, like you said, in a freer environment.
Yeah, and it really helps when you disagree. It, it, you're, you don't, you don't look at that person and say, well, I don't like you because you don't agree with me. You, you recognize they have a difference in opinion, try and convince them that your opinion is right.
Well, and I think to your point, you know, that having those conversations are important and that the typical board meeting setting doesn't really provide for, right? You're, you're, you know, kind of, it's, you're formal, you're, you know, you're sitting at a dais, it's just a formal environment, right? And the way that you can kind of best connect is when it, when you're in a less formal environment, you know? And that's kind of one of the questions that people, you know, will ask, like, when do we ever get the chance to just sit together and talk as a board? And find that you're, you know, your typical meeting, so much of your time is what do we have to, you know, what's required that we have to approve, what are the reports we have to give? Like, all of those things that, you know, work that's needed, that doesn't always allow the time for those important connections. So sometimes, to your point, Karen, sometimes you have to make the time, right? Either, like you said, in Atlantic City or, you know, through a board retreat, but at the end of the day, it is important for the board, you know, cohesion to make that time. So. Okay, then let's talk about, I guess, that shared accountability and saying, are there any kind of agreements or practices that, you know, that we want to hold ourselves to of kind of saying that this is the way we do things here? You know, one of the things that boards are starting to do somewhat is like, like putting, like, governance manuals together or like starting to kind of codify their work so that it stays like longer than all of you at this table. So have, that seems to be a practice that's starting to happen more. So I don't know if there's things that as you talk about, you know, as you think about, you know, things that would be important that you need to, to commit or that you think would be important to kind of have codified so that it, it does kind of remain the way we do things around here.
They just need to have the New Jersey School Boards president on their board, then they don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
She, I mean, but it is true, though.
So Karen's your walking manual, right?
Without, right, without joking, I mean, she, I think a lot of the best practices over the years, people like Karen who've, you know, been involved or, there are people who've, we've had a lot of longevity on the board and I'm not sure how typical that is, but, you know, I, I think we use a lot of the practices recommended by Morris County and New Jersey School Boards. Like, that's how we function already. So I, I think, and from everything that Karen has said, we, we are a pretty good model for other boards and how we've been running and not saying that we're perfect or we haven't had challenges or we don't experience some of the human issues. But I don't know. I mean, like, I, I think it's not a bad idea, but I, I think that we already get that from other places. I mean, and, and have a lot of it in place, not to, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but like, right?
What's not a bad idea?
I mean, well, talking about codifying it, but I, codifying it, but I feel like we, we utilize the resources that are already there, I guess is what I'm saying. And, and part of that is by being true to New Jersey School Boards and how they recommend an effective board running. I think that's how we've tried to run for many years and how we've actually run. So I, I don't know.
The one thing I...
Am I wrong?
Do you have an example or two of some of these other districts you can maybe share with me, I could share it out with everybody?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that would be nice to see. Yeah. But, you know, just being reminded every so often about, about our commitment to the kids and to the district, I, I think that re, re-levels us, re-centers us and brings our focus back into thinking about how best to achieve those goals. So for instance, you know, when we're communicating with each other, we, again, we try to listen to each other, we try to be open with each other. You know, and I'm looking at some of these things that you have here. You know, we, we also sort of recommit ourselves to doing a good job, which means like coming prepared to the meetings and reading the information that he sends us. Things like that help to bring us back to our central goal and central purpose. So, anyway.
I'd say this, we have a, we have a shared attitude of how we approach all of our issues. So that may not really lend itself to like a codification type of, of thing because it's more of just as new people come on the board, we're showing them the right attitude to have in the board meetings and committee meetings and in our communications. And then they pick up on that and that's how we're, we're continuing, continuing the traditions.
It's like an oral tradition.
An oral tradition.
Yeah, no, but I've seen it. I mean, I know you two probably have seen it a lot more than I have. I, I'm the third, the third longest person on the board now, which is crazy. But I've seen as other members have come on, how they come on with a certain attitude and then that evolves. And I've seen how my, I know how my attitude evolved in watching Karen and Mike and Charlie and Matt Kane, when he was on the board, he was, he was here when I got on. And their advice to me, how to behave, how to comport myself, how to listen, how to interact, it's been very helpful to get that advice from the older members.
Same, we're seasoned.
Seasoned. Seasoned is better.
Well, seasoned.
Seasoned.
Yeah. I, I, the one thing I just think this board has benefited from, I don't know if it's by sheer luck or the board's attitude or, but, you know, we haven't had any three-board member turnover situations, which really changes the, the comprising of, of a board. And I think having, you know, one new member and then one new member and, and that allows for new ideas to get injected without losing a lot of the, you know, culture that we're talking about here. And I think that's lent itself to this board's success.
So I would say, as the new board member, I much prefer how it is done here. If you handed me a manual or a booklet, it would not carry as much as the conversations that I've had with everybody here. Because I would say each person on this board brings a very different perspective to how they approach the standards of being a board member and the value that they each bring. So having these individual conversations really opens your eyes to the different avenues you can take and what you can learn from each person. And everyone here has been very open and honest and welcoming on top of that to make me feel like, like you do belong here and what you bring is valuable. So I like the way the Montville Board handles it.
Perfect. Good. I know we touched a little bit on the roles and, you know, I know, Dave, you said that the board really tries hard to kind of stay in its lane and understand its roles. So just kind of, you know, just kind of things, how do you feel like you support the superintendent or what are things that you consciously do as a board to make sure that you are staying in those roles and that you are providing that needed support?
I'll say, I, I tell people, when they come to me with a problem, I say, have you spoken to your principal yet? That's the first thing I tell people. Talk to, no, I, I believe in the chain of command. And I, I tell people, go to your teacher, go to the principal, you know, go to the superintendent. I can't help you yet. So that's one, that's an example for me.
I try to give Tom compliments when he, you know, when he earns it, especially publicly because that's important. And, you know...
Not that Tom.
Yes, that Tom, Dr. Gorman. But I also tell people that he's great to speak with if they ever need to speak with him. And, you know, I, I think that's important, that we really do trust you, Tom. And I feel that way in the community as well. And I know Dave mentioned the, the beginning about some of the emails and stuff like that, but I think it's because a lot of us, we're not used to links, clicking on links and reading your reports. So you, you did great. It was just us, we needed to be, and then we explained to you and then everything was fine. But I think that's how I feel.
But we also, we also benefit greatly from Tom's demeanor, from Casey, from Andrea, from our principals and our staff, the remainder of our staff in the district. They are generally very approachable. They like their jobs here. They feel they're respected and they are respected by the board, every one of them. And so I think that makes them more open to talking to the parents. And so again, I, I think that makes the whole district more welcoming, accepting, open for those conversations so that people don't necessarily have to come to the board.
And, you know, I, when I attended my new school board member weekend, I learned many things, but one of the things that has always stuck with me is board members are the what and the administration is the how. And if we keep that in our minds when we're, you know, challenged with something or thinking about something or, you know, have to come to a decision about something or how to act, just think about that. Is this the what or is this the how? And if it's the what, then that's your job, board member. If it's the how, it's not. And I, I do think we have laid down a pretty bright line between micromanaging and due diligence.
And that's important because, you know, sometimes it's thought that, you know, that this is like definitive black and white, right? And then you sit at the board table and learn that there's a lot of gray, right? And so how your board is able to navigate that gray, and it sounds like you, you know, have come to this understanding, like you said, of the what and the how, that kind of helps your board do that rather than kind of feel lost in that.
But, but you know, right now, our current climate in this country is very polarized. A lot of people want to get antagonists, you know, they want to get score points, they want to like, you know, get your quotes in, you know, that it's, we have a lot of that attitude and a lot of people think, hey, I want to be on the Board of Ed so I can do something. And they have a specific idea in mind. And then when they get here, they realize that's not what we do. And it's, you know, because we do instill that, you know, that bright line, as you said, in between our role as overseeing Tom versus getting something done, you know, or doing something.
No, I was gonna say, I wanted to run for Board of Ed years ago and it was all about the taxes, you know? So I think, we're talking about political climate now, I think for all years, people always had an issue. Maybe that was true at special education, it was something important in their heart. And then they realize, well, I can't really do anything about it, you'll probably get more done being, you know, a parent, not on the board. But what's wonderful is... But what's wonderful is with our administration, you know, we all come with our values. And Dr. Gorman, you know, is very, he listens, he's empathetic, and I don't think any of us change who we are. We're just work as a team to get whatever results that the administration feels that's best for the kids.
And we do question him. Don't, don't think we just give him a blank check. We, we question him, but, but, you know, we do rely on him a lot and his expertise.
I think the board has a very good blend of diverse opinions. You know, I tell you, when I was on the board at first, honestly and truly, I couldn't tell what political party anybody was. Now, I, I think I probably could, because I think in this era, just about everybody knows who is what political party. And I can say, we have both ends of the spectrum on this board. Now, two things about that. One is that while we have that, we have people who are very respectful of each other's opinions and have the wisdom to understand that while they may have one point of view, there may be a divergent point of view, which also has merit. And we are very respectful of each other's opinions and are not sometimes afraid to say, you know what, I, I didn't see it before, but now I kind of get it. I'm glad we have diverse opinions on the board, because if you have nine people on the board who all think the same about everything, you don't have an effective governing body, you have a cult. And so that's why I'm very glad with the balance we have now that, you know, it gives Dr. Gorman a chance to hear a lot of different views on things and helps him make his opinions, I mean, make his decisions, rather. But, you know, it's a matter of just, he gets to, he gets to use the resources he has. And I really appreciate the fact that on this board, I don't think there's anybody who would say, I don't like so and so. We all get along well with each other and no one's here to be a disruptor. Sometimes people use the word agenda like it's a bad thing. I mean, I, look, if you're going to run for the board, I hope you have an agenda. Your agenda better be to improve the schools. And some people do have things that are near and dear to their hearts more than others. But, you know, ultimately, we're listening to each other and we're kind of becoming a, becomes a melting pot for our ideas. And I think that's important.
And I think, you know, one of those things too, that, you know, as much as, I mean, I think it's interesting too that you guys, a lot of the conversation is talking about, you know, the work you're doing with your administration, but it's really you guys and how you work together as a team, right? And so I want to make sure you guys are giving yourself credit too, right, for, for the, for the work that you're doing. Because that's one of the things I think that you learn right away too. You know, you mentioned you run as an individual, you have thoughts, but then you, when you get on the board, you, you know, come to learn that you govern as a team, right? You're an individual member, but the work that you do, the governance that you do is the team. And so kind of essentially saying, how am I helping make this be the best team it possibly can be that's focused on students? And so each one of you is coming to this table, it sounds like, with that perspective, right? Of, and, and so that's really kind of what helps separate or make that difference. So we kind of talked about, and it kind, kind of leads into like what it means to work as a unified team. And I think that, you know, I think, Mike, you just made a very important point, that, you know, kind of the distinguishment between uniform, which is kind of what you were describing initially of everybody having the same opinions versus unified, meaning we all come to the table with different opinions, with different viewpoints, we are able to articulate those, and then we come together and make a decision based on that unifying purpose, that one thing that we said drives all of the work that we do. And so that's kind of what separates that difference is being a unified board that makes decisions and comes together, even, you know, like you said, it's stronger as a result of your differences, knowing that each one of you is going to help make a decision that's in the best interests of the students and the district. And so you have that confidence and that trust in one another that those, even though those opinions that are different are coming from that place, right? Of wanting to do what's best for everyone. So as we just kind of, you know, look ahead and, you know, we're looking at maybe other things that we can do to sustain the work that we do, I don't know if you have any advice or thoughts or things of like, yep, this is what really makes a difference and we need to keep doing this? If there's any kind of thoughts about how we sustain the work that you're doing here?
Let me just ask a question if I could, Tom.
Sure.
Can I put you on the spot for a moment?
It's all being recorded, so.
It's all being recorded, yeah. Do you have some advice for us as far as moving forward and how to become a better board and things that we could do, you know, to do a better job?
So, you know, I, I was getting all choked up, obviously, you know, but, but I, I wanted to end when, when you were all done. I really appreciate the comments and this place is a very special place. Several of us have worked in other districts and this place is unique in how great the board is, how beautiful the community is and how wonderful the students are. I mean, you could look around at the administrators, how many people have been staying for 10-plus years? And then you could look at the board, how many people have been staying for a long time? That doesn't happen. And you were right that, you know, a lot of people, you see two or three people come on with an agenda and try, and that's very disruptive. So it's been working extremely well. So it's been a pleasure working with all of you. And because of that, we're able to accomplish a lot of these goals. I think all the things that you all brought up are wonderful. I agree with everything that everybody said here. It's just a matter of now, you know, and, and it's hard, it's just human nature, you know? How do you carry that forward on, you know, June 15th or, you know, February 8th, you know, when it was getting a little hot and there's people out there in the audience and, you know, you have these competing interests and things like that. But keeping in mind, you know, what's best for the students and, and doing everything you can for the students is the undermining, is the, is the root of the whole goal of what we're trying to accomplish. I think we can't go wrong. And then walk away respectfully. So I think we just have to remind each other all the time of, of these principles that you've all brought up tonight and hear each other out and then we'll accomplish great things. But I, I liked everything I said and I would love to continue these discussions as we move forward, absolutely.
So we're perfect, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Apparently we're perfect.
We are a very good...
I love all my, you know, I love all three of my children equally, they're all perfect, you know, and...
You know, in many ways, we are a family here. We are a small group of people, we get together a lot. You know, I see all of you more than I see my own family, because they all live in Virginia and elsewhere, but, you know, it's like, we, we are family, we're, we're together. And you, you may disagree with your family members, you, you may have conflicts with them, but in the, at the end of the day, you still, they're still there and you still work with them and you still, you know, try to make the best of things and, I mean, that's what this is, it's like a family.
Thank you. I think, think we're good, right? Is there anything else that anyone, while we're here, sitting together to kind of talk about governance, talk about the board's work? Anything else that anyone feels would like to share?
All right, I guess our hour's up, we'll be here next week for, you know, more counseling.
Well, as usual, we, we appreciate your time.
Pleasure.
Especially when you're supposed to be retired and yet you're, you're still pulled back and you're still training board, so...
Supposed to be is the operative word.
But we, we do appreciate it and you coming back. And you've always been a great sounding board for, for all of us whenever we've needed, so we appreciate that.
This has been very productive, thank you so much for coming.
Oh, no, it's my pleasure.
Thank you, Charlie.
It's, it's, it's very rewarding for me to hear boards, you know, who understand their work and understand their role, you know, sometimes it's, you know, other boards are challenged with trying to get here and it's good for them to know that you can do the, well, like, it's possible for that to happen and that boards do do this and to see the difference that it makes. So for me to kind of sit and hear you talk this way is very rewarding. So I just want to thank all of you for, for providing me that opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second, thank you. Anyone oppose? Okay, have a good night, we'll see you all next month.
Thank you, everyone. Oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Charlie. I hope you got paid for this.
It is happening soon. Yeah.